Councilor Order for Monday, March 28th. I'll rise for the pledge.
Pledge of Duty. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence for everything going on in the world today.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warpo.
Here. Let the record show, nine present, zero absent, seven in chambers, two by Zoom. Kevin? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and Counsel. Obviously, you've got third string here tonight. Phil's on vacation and the mayor had a conflict, but he wanted me to make sure that you all knew that either myself, or Phil, or he will always be here to give a report. And so, I went over several things with him this morning to make sure that my report was as thorough as possible. So, I'll go through those items and hopefully be very quick. The mayor met with utilities, mainly the, or namely, the Hammond Water Works and Sanitary District regarding the budgetary impacts of their pilot payments and whether or not they can meet their obligations based upon the increased cost they're facing. For example, I learned today that chemicals have quadrupled, the cost of chemicals has quadrupled at the Water Works and similarly at the Sanitary District. So, between increased costs of goods, increased cost of labor, bids that are going out are increased as well, 7% inflation, war in Ukraine, et cetera, all impacting costs at our utilities. The assumptions regarding the pilot payments were built into the budget. However, the changes in the world are starting to wreak havoc on those budgets. And I know that Megan and her staff is monitoring the situation, but the mayor at least wanted me to let you know that that is potentially impacting the pilot payments that were budgeted for both Hammond Water Works and Sanitary District. Some good news to report is that both Holman Avenue reconstruct from Sibley to Russell and the Kennedy Avenue Downtown Project, construction will be starting next week on both projects. As you know, ARP funds are being used for both of those projects, five million each. Fire station number two update, plans are at 90%, and that project will go to bid this spring. And we look forward to a new fire station up in, serving the northern part of our city, specifically Robertsdale and North Hammond. Just approved through the Board of Works is to go to bid for Phase Two of the Robertsdale Letter Mediation Project. That will include 30 properties. The bid is set for April, and that work will be completed in 2022. And it will take us to approximately 47 properties remediated. I know that the 17 property owners, some of those were doubles, so probably isn't 17 letters, it was probably like 14 letters, because some people own two properties. Those letters went out along with the recorded certificates on those properties. So, that was real exciting to see those go out and to have that actually recorded on those properties and that the city was able to give that relief to those residents in a much quicker manner than would have happened through the state or the federal government. We had a very lively mayor's night out in the First District, so I want to thank everybody that went to that. I thought that was a good and interesting discussion. And I want to thank Lost Marsh and the Port Authority and all the folks up there that put that on. There was a very exciting meeting with Councilman Tyler at City Hall with Economic Development and redevelopment. And the result of that is there's going to be an RFP for the redevelopment of, well, we can just look out the window here, from here to Eden, those buildings that are left are going to be demolished soon. And then also from Highland Street Parking Lot to the bar, which is, I think, is Good Time Charlie's. Those are all city-owned, and there's going to be, I know Anne's here in Africa, and their department have been working very hard on getting that out to RFP. So, we're looking forward to developers for commercial development right here on Calumet Avenue, which is really exciting. It also may change a little bit of parking along Highland and along Lyons here that will open up some additional parking, maybe some angle parking and things like that, some parallel parking up on Highland. I know our city planner, Mr. Poland, is working with Mr. Button, our city engineer, on those plans. So, that's exciting, and we look forward to hopefully some development that will provide commercial right here on Calumet Avenue across from the new high school and right next to City Hall. The mayor wanted me to mention that the call-out right now for folks with a CDL is huge. There are jobs available for hire with the city if you have a CDL. The pay is over $20 an hour, approximately $20 an hour. You get, of course, 14 holidays, health, dental, vision, and pension benefits, and many overtime opportunities. So, anyone that is either listening on Facebook or is hearing this when it's recorded or even just in the room now, if you know anyone with a CDL, please have them contact Sharon Daniels at Personnel so she can get their resume in and their application, because there are jobs available, and good jobs, with good benefits. The ATG tax abatement is before you tonight, and the mayor wanted me to mention that the administration is fully supportive of it, and it looks forward to Eric Gastovich and his team building a phenomenal project in downtown Hammond and bringing people back to live downtown and to make that a vibrant place that we all believe it should be and that it will be after some time and some significant investment. And so, we believe that the tax payment that's being requested by Mr. Gastovich and his team is appropriate, and the administration fully supports it, and would request the council to support it tonight. The mayor met with both police and fire departments to figure out how to get one, and I guess, you know, these are important points for the mayor. One, to make sure that we maintain and increase a diverse workforce, and two, to have the best candidates apply so that we are competitive throughout the other municipalities in Lake County, including the county. And so, we're working out ways to do that, including increasing probationary fire and police pay, and also removing the one-year requirement for residency, which is before you tonight, among other things. So, there are, the police, I believe, have estimated somewhere between 15 and 30 police officers could retire in the next two to three years. And so, those are, you know, you can look at that two ways, glass half-full or glass half-empty. Glass half-empty, we're losing some very veteran police officers. Glass half-full, it allows folks that are in the middle area to move up, and it allows some young men and women to become police officers in our great city. So, again, I would encourage any young person that you may know to apply to become a firefighter or a police officer in the city of Hammond. The Disabilities Breakfast was well-attended and well-organized, and a thank you goes out to the Disabilities Commission for their continued fine, hard work and commitment to those members of our community with disabilities. Highlighting the work that is being done in that community has always been important to the city, and I think the city's been at the forefront of that issue for some time. The mayor was excited to announce that Toby Keith will be playing for Festival of the Lakes on Wednesday night. VIP experience passes are available right now on festallakes.com. And he also wanted the council and the public to know that the city is very close with four of the five nights being done. Can't quite announce them yet, but we're getting close on those announcements, and it's going to be another great and fabulous Festival of the Lakes that I think will always seem, we always seem every year to say, this is our best one, and then every year, it's another best one. So, I know that Eileen and Jill Gajewski and others are working very hard, have a whole committee working hard to make sure to bring you the best festival and bring the region the best festivals, they get to come to Hammond and see what we have up here at Wolf Lake. Lastly, I did want to mention, and I saw Ruth Morris here tonight, the city has met with Mike Nolan and Nick D regarding the South Hammond Parking Lot and the concerns that we have regarding the size of that lot and the impact that will have in the Fourth District and in that neighborhood. And so, I wanted the council to know that it is a important, it is an important issue to the administration, and it knows that it's an important issue to that neighborhood and to South Hammond. The dean, Button, and the city engineering department is working with a consultant that will continue to press that issue with both Nick D and beyond. And we believe that Mr. Nolan and his crew came to City Hall, I think, with open minds and looking for a solution that is both consistent with their application to the federal government and yet can take into consideration the concerns of the residents in that part of the city. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the council for their time. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
With regard to the parking lot in South Hammond for the train project, there have not been any, I know that there are meetings with the administration and Nick D and all that, but I've gotten some calls, and I'm sure Councilman Emerson has two, with regard to updating the neighborhood on what's going on. Because obviously, everyone knows that the neighborhood is opposed to the size of the parking lot that they're proposing. So, I guess my suggestion would be to update the neighborhood, have a meeting with the neighborhood so the residents can come out and ask questions and voice their opinion and concerns.
I think that's a great idea, Councilwoman Vines, and I will take it back to the mayor and to Nick D. And I know that Mr. Button would be there, as well as Mr. Poland and other people from the administration, be happy to report at least what we know. I can tell you that the, you know, the mantra we keep hearing from Nick D is, well, this is what the application was approved. And as much as we understand that, we're still pushing back, and we're not just going to take that as the only answer. And so, we're working, we want to work with them, but we also don't want to, we want them to understand that this is a serious issue, because it is to the neighborhood.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Yes. Yeah, at the meeting with Nick D, I felt that all along, traffic's been a consideration for me, and if you go to 173rd and Calumet, or if you go to even Holman Avenue at rush hour in the morning and in the evening, it's an issue right now, and having a 600-car parking lot, if that's the final number they agree on, I don't see how that, I brought that up early on, like, four years ago, I think, and they said, oh, we've studied the traffic and it's not going to be a problem. I think it is a problem right now at 173rd and Calumet with Walgreens and Dunkin' Donuts. But I would support a meeting, if we have a community meeting, if Nick D wants to do that. I will try to be there certainly, because I know it's an issue. 90% of the people that call me don't want the station there. They're okay with the train, but they don't want the station. But be that as it may, I did have a question, Mr. President. Early on, you talked about Water Works and Sanitation and its impact on the budget. Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. I believe there was a pilot payment, so payment in lieu of taxes, payment that was in the budget. Megan, that's accurate, right? Yes. Okay. And so, that's a payment that they make annually, since they don't pay taxes, it's based upon the amount of property that they own. And last year, I believe, we had a consultant do an analysis, maybe it was two years ago, to give the real, you know, hopefully it's close to a good number that they should be paying, or they, you know, because they don't pay taxes, right, their utility. So, we tried to work that number into the budget, and the point I was trying to make, Councilman Emerson, was that because of some other un, or at least at the time, unknown increases in other things at the Sanitary District, that's impacting their ability to potentially make that full number, which, of course, would impact the city budget. So, it's not, it's not like the alarm's being sounded fully yet, but it's more of a heads-up that, I mean, we're only in March, and they're already saying like, hey, we can't believe how much this is costing us now, you know, not the pilot payment, but chemicals, fuel, you know, on and on. So, those were unforeseen circumstances. I think nobody expected inflation to be what it is, nobody expected the war in Ukraine to affect gas the way it is, or even there to be a war in Ukraine. So, that was the point I was trying to make.
So, what is the number in lieu of taxes right now?
Couldn't tell you. I mean, I don't have the budget with me, I'm sorry, Councilman, I just don't have that at my fingertips.
Anybody else?
Have any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you. Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Accept the minutes for March 14, 2022, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Darrell.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move to approve claims, beginning with claim dated 3/17/2022 and ending with claim dated, claims dated 3/23/2022. Claim number 1654 through claim number 2018 inclusive, the amount of $25,296,214, $296,214.3.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Darrell Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings.
22RO4, sponsored by, I'm sorry, Councilman Torres and Councilwoman Vines, and petitioned by the Mayor's Department of Economic Development. A declaratory resolution determined that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana be designated as the ATG Rembach Economic Revitalization Area in which deductions from asset valuation may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana pursuant to code, pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Does anyone here wish to speak on this issue? Does anyone here wish to speak on this issue? Does anyone here wish to speak on this issue? Hearing none, public hearings are now closed. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Koinski.
Just one announcement, Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association Meeting will take place tomorrow at 6:30 at the Hammond Mohawks located at 141st and Calumet Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any further communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I wanted to remind everyone that our animal licenses are due March 31st, that is in the clerk's office, and coming up on April 15th, rental registrations will be due.
Does anybody else have any further communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, last week, March 21st, wrote a letter to the several department heads and the mayor on streets that need to be done in the district, including state line from Carroll to North Willow Court, Goslin, Columbia Avenue, Calumet Avenue, Hoffman Street, Calumet Avenue to Holman Avenue, 150th Street, Columbia Avenue to Calumet Avenue, Michigan Street, Columbia Avenue to Holman Avenue, Summer Street, Indianapolis Boulevard to Columbia Avenue, Hudson Street to Holman Avenue to Sheffield Avenue, and also, safety guards on overpass on Holman Avenue, on east side of Holman Avenue. And I directed these letters, I just wanted to be placed on record that I requested this at that date.
So noted. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything under communications? Does anybody else have anything under communications? Does anybody else have anything under communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
You caught me snoozing there for a second.
That's okay, I just woke up.
Yes, I wanted to give an update on the Capitol Improvements Board. We did meet on March 21st. We approved $25,000 for Hammond consultant support related to the Nick D Westlake Project in the amount of $25,000. This is, this is with regard to South Hammond Parking and upon, pond, I can't read my writing, upon, up at the Gateway location. We approved $25,875 for engineering services to perform the PESA rating inspection by NICE Engineering. Come to find out, that is Pavement Service and Rating System is required by INDOT, and We also approved $1 million. This was for the 2022 Overlay Program, and the streets have been evaluated and there is a list available. We also approved $59,750 for drainage improvements at 52169th Street. This is a, this is a federal highway project in cooperation with NERPC, and it is an 80/20 split. We also approved $17,462.24. This is for the Michigan slash Indianapolis retaining wall design. We also approved $53,350. This is for the Right-of-Way Acquisition at Michigan Street and Indianapolis Boulevard. That was an agreement that was made when Lear, is that the name of the company, came in there to alleviate some of the traffic. And also, with regard to Councilman Torres and the communication that he sent to the Capitol Improvement Board, I just wanted to thank him for coming before the board. I think that he got answers, immediate answers for some of the projects that he is looking to accomplish. Some of them, not too promising, unless we get some huge funding somewhere along the line. But I thank you, Councilman Torres, for at least being willing to come before the board and find out what's going on with some of the projects that you are interested in accomplishing. Mr. President, if I could move on to.
Go ahead.
Community Crime Watch. Coming up on Wednesday, April 20th, at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza, there will be a meeting at the senior building there, beginning at 1:00 PM. Edison Community Watch generally meets the first Wednesday of each month, which would be coming up next week, April 6th. That meeting is canceled due to previous engagement. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, April 5th, at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 21st, at the Gene Shepherd Center at 6:00 PM. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, April 1st, 9:15 AM at Irving School. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet, and this is the group that only meets twice a year. They have a meeting coming up on Thursday, April 21st, beginning at 6:30 PM at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of 173rd and Holman. Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 14th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. And once again, if anyone is interested in finding out what's going on in your neighborhood, not only with regard to crime, but also some activities that are going on in your neighborhood, please come out and meet some of your neighbors and learn some safety measures that you can take to protect you and your family and your property. And as always, if you see anything suspicious, please call 911, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Does anybody else have any committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman.
One quick note on the Crime Watch. Hessville Crime Watch will be combined with the South Holman, one in Trinity.
Oh, okay.
Because Sergeant Scott is in charge of both of them.
Both of them, okay. Thursday, the 21st.
Hessville will be at the South Holman.
Okay, good. There'll be a nice crowd there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Yeah, we're going to bring out 2212 and 2213, councils whole.
Thank you. Councilman Torres.
President.
How we bring you, Councilwoman Alexander.
I just wanted to update the residents regarding the scholarship for our seniors of this year. The scholarship will, needs to be postmarked and received by March 31st, which is this Thursday. So, for those seniors that have not filled out the application, we are really encouraging you to do so. On April 11th, we will be selecting the 15 winners of the $1,000 scholarship, and on May 9th, we are encouraging those students that do get selected to be in attendance on May 9th for their awards and to take a council pitch.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'd like to bring out ordinance 2210 for consideration of final passage.
Anybody else have anything under committee reports? Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance 2210, petitioned by Hoffman Street Partners LLC. In ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, in ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps, to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for properly commonly known as 831 through 849 Hoffman Street, Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I, I, okay, like to not bring out, but.
2210.
Yeah, 2210.
Third reading and final passage.
Third reading of final passage, yes.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Darrell Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Yes, let the record show, the ordinance passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2212, sponsored by Councilman Raykos. In ordinance to add certain sections to Chapter 34 of the Hammond City Code related to enumerating powers of the Board of Public Works and Safety.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raykos.
Move for final passage and adoption of ordinance number 22-12.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Raykos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Raykos.
This is, this ordinance will streamline the powers of the Board of Public Works with the City Council and especially the whereas that is most important is the need to respond requests for signage around the city in a timely manner and unburden the City Council with the need for passing ordinances on each sign or other traffic control and regulation requests. It's appropriate to clearly delineate one central body to manage, oversee, and regulate movement of traffic pedestrians upon the street and ways of the city while still providing information and notice to the City Council and the Mayor.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Darrell Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raykos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show, the ordinance passes eight in favor, one opposed.
Ordinance 2213, sponsored by Councilman Raykos. In ordinance amending ordinance number 8620, otherwise known as the residency requirement for Hammond employees pertaining to the elimination of the, of course, said requirement for Hammond Police and Fire.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raykos.
I move for final passage and adoption of 22-13.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Raykos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Raykos.
In the past, Police and Fire had to maintain residency for the first year and as it states in the ordinance, is due to the competitive salary and benefits of Police and Fire Departments in nearby communities, the City of Hammond must make changes in order to maintain a strong and diverse Police and Fire workforce. And therefore, they want to eliminate the one-year residency for sworn Hammond Police and Fire.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. I can appreciate the Fire and Police Chiefs' frustration with getting numbers up there for hires in the City of Hammond. I just would prefer that they don't take the residency and that maybe this is an opportunity to really look at Hammond and aggressively try again to go after Hammond residents who might be interested. We have 70,000 residents. People need jobs. I know the pandemic scared people away from work and they're slow to come back, but I'm willing to have the departments go after employees from the City of Hammond and concentrate on that. And if they're not going to do that and this residency is going to be discarded, I would think that maybe we should look at, why is Hammond not an appealing place to move to? But also, perhaps we should look at Academy Bound and the Training for New EMTs that want to work in the City of Hammond and maybe those programs should be discontinued if there's no incentive to live in here and to, in order, if, if living in Hammond doesn't help people get free education, we really have to look at what else is there to incent them with to be a part of Hammond versus getting rid of the residency. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I would just hope that as we're deciding on this, that as Police and Fire are doing their evaluations, going through all of their processes, that they're always looking at our Hammond residents first in accordance with going with other residents from other areas to get the, the exact number that they're looking for. I'm pretty sure both Chiefs are doing a good job with that, that they are vetting our Hammond residents as well as trying to get those others to participate or to get hired. But we do know that in this pandemic, it has been extremely hard between, they have people retiring, things like that, and they're trying to get a certain number. And I know we can go back and we can look at bringing this back once again at a proper time after, you know, we go ahead and make our decision today.
Does anybody else have any further discussion? Does anybody else have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Darrell Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
That was a yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raykos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show, the ordinance, the motion carries eight in favor, one opposed.
That concludes ordinance final passage.
Was that all three of them? Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on, introduction of ordinances.
I'm sorry. Ordinance 2214, petitioned by Mayor's Office of Economic Development, sponsored by Councilman Torres and Councilwoman Vines. In ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, upon recommendation of the Hammond Economic Development Commission designating a certain area within the city as an economic development target area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2214, refer to Council as a whole with the committee meeting on April 11th at 5:15 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This is in regards to the ATG Rimbach Project and it's part two of the, oh, help me, Anne, excuse me, pardon me?
Tax abatement process.
Tax abatement process.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. All righty.
I'm sorry, my pen dropped. That wasn't intentional.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Darrell Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raykos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Item number 11, Resolutions.
Resolution 22R-6, petitioned by the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, sponsored by Councilman Torres and Councilwoman Vines. A resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming Resolution Number 22RO4 that designated and established a certain area of the City of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area to which deductions of assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 22RO6.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This is again in regards to the ATG Rimbach Project and this is the confirmatory resolution.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Darrell.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raykos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent. It concludes resolution, moving on to new and unfinished business. The notice of intent goes away because the ordinance passed. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, the first name on the list is Ruth Morris. How you doing, Ruth?
Good evening, Anne, good evening, Councilpeople. I do have some comments about the train from the perspective of South Hammond and with talking to Dean and talking to Kevin, I found out that they have made some ideas and improvements. I also. I wrote an email to Mike Nolan of NERC, a while ago, never got any response, and this is a synopsis of what I wrote to him. And again, because Dean and Kevin have been working on this and I did mention to them that being the voice of the neighborhood, I was not getting anything at all about what they were doing. They have done quite a few things that are on our list, I am going to read this though for you two, on what we object to, and I'm going to stay in touch with Dean and Kevin. And we are also going to ask for a neighborhood meeting. There has not been a neighborhood meeting since this, everything came about, and the last one was at Kenwood School, I think it was two or three years ago. They've had some updates lately, but those, I mean, in between then, but they were just, you know, signs and shows and everything else without really having any specific updates. So right now, I'm talking about that South Hammond Station. And as this reads, this is a synopsis of emailed information sent March 8th to Michael Nolan, Westlake Quarter Project, Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District. Mike, upon reading the article in the Sunday, March 6th, 2022 Times, rail project sparks concern and reading this article and that the mayor was really upset, again, it got me upset, but the neighborhood upset, what's going on, what are we doing, everything else. We've never been informed or kept up to date. The rail projects, okay, sparked concern with Hammond. Our intense interest in following the South Hammond Westlake section of the project is still very haunting. Everybody that drives down 173rd or down Lyman or anywhere around there and seeing the construction that's going on, seeing unfortunately that we lost all the trees, we lost all the deer, we lost everything, and they're accepting that because that's where the train's going. Sort of. The residents of the Southmore Road neighborhood, and in case anybody doesn't know where that is, it's from the, the river by Holman and Munster all the way up to 165th. That's our whole neighborhood and that also is the Crime Watch Group for the South Holman area. The residents of, of Southmore Road neighborhood are wanting to know how this will affect our well-established, middle-class, very quiet residential neighborhood. First of all, we're putting up with the train, but second of all, the thinking of over 700 and something cars that were in the original project is just daunting. We dread the intrusion from all sides, 173rd, Lyman, Holman, 175th, and Harrison. The thought of turning this residential area into two massive parking lots is undesirable and especially with the possibility of increased crime. Now, we know that a lot of people are going to be walking around. We've heard that there have been incidents at some of the other South Shore stations, break-ins and car theft. Well, we don't want that. And in the meantime, Dean had said that it sounds like the south parking lot, the one south of 173rd, may be eliminated. That's what they're trying to do and that's one of the ones that we were really upset about. An idea of a two-story parking facility north of 173rd was originally proposed to save the open space that would have taken, taken the overflow south of 173rd. And the other thing about that south lot that we were very upset about is that they were going to make the entrance off 175th and Harrison. 175th is a very small, two-lane residential street and coming up to Harrison, of course, Harrison, they're all two lanes, but coming up there and breaking into there to make an entrance to this south parking lot, it was unbelievable. How are we going to have these cars driving down? Well, that's, I think, why they've tried to eliminate this south parking lot, from what Dean said. And I also asked Dean to please keep me informed or have me part of some of the meetings or something so that I can pass these on. Thinking into the future, okay, and again, this was talking before I talked to Dawn, of both, if both lots were built and the demand for 761 proposed spaces diminishes, we will, in the future, if they don't need that many, we will be left with unusable paved emptiness, which is what the south lot would have become if they did what they wanted to do and paved it. Now what are we looking at? Pavement, nothing. So if they don't use it, if they don't turn it into a parking lot, we'd like to have them turn it back into a park area, put the trees back in, put some, something walking path in there, even if they have to go around the circle. But it also should connect up with the little, with the Monon Track, I'm sorry, with the Monon Trail. So, there's a lot that they can do with this south lot, but we don't want it paved and then say, oh, we're not going to use it.
Ms. Morris, Ms. Morris.
Yes.
Here.
I'm sorry.
You got normally three minutes, but it's over.
Got one more sentence.
Okay.
A neighborhood meeting has been requested over and over again to address the concerns and talking with Dean and talking with Kevin, we are going to try to have a neighborhood meeting and that would satisfy everybody because they hear it firsthand from the people who are working on it. Also, the little packet that you got with it are some of the original plans that I've underlined some of the information and just one more scenario here. If anybody doesn't know this, this train is only a shuttle train. They don't get on in Dyer or Munster and take that same train all the way to Chicago. They go up to the Gateway Station and change trains. Now, if that's a surprise to anybody, just because they never said that, that's how it is. The Gateway is where it goes into Chicago.
Thank you. And as you heard earlier, Mr. Smith and Councilman Emerson and Councilwoman Vines have all called for the meeting, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you guys.
George? I was going to say, you got to come up with the. I was going to say, you got to come up with the suspenders on. I like the look. I like the look. They're blue.
That's what I said. Anyway, got to admit, hate to be the bearer of bad news. I was alarmed a few minutes ago when Kevin was discussing and mentioning this pilot program and the shortfalls of the sanitation district and water department, apparently complaining, complaining, I'm using it loosely, unable to make their nut for, I don't know if it's monthly, whatever it is, and then attributing it to some of the unforeseeable costs, I guess, of the Ukrainian war and COVID, et cetera, et cetera. What, what I'm worried about is, and it goes back to my, uh, my complaints last year or two years ago, I can't remember anymore, when we withdrew from the I U R C. Because I remember back in 2013, I think it was at Old Bannon, was it middle school, elementary school? The mayor back in 2013 telling us about, well, if we win this litigation with Chicago Heights, the City of Hammond is going to be fine concerning water and all that stuff. And the residents can be assured of a low, lower water rate and all this other good stuff. And apparently, we did win the litigation and, or it was settled out of court, whatever the case may be, in favorable terms. And then we've got this, this new contract that, we have this recent litigation that involved all the cities, and as I understand it, Hammond Water, for example, supplies water to, what, seven Illinois municipalities? And then about, what, three or four here in Lake, maybe five in Lake County? And what I'm worried about is this shortfall is going to fall heavily on the citizens of Hammond because our rates are fixed by ordinance, as I understand it. And I'm, hopefully, whatever I'm saying here, this is just, I'm brainstorming. I'm not saying anything with definitive clarity, because that's what I'm looking for, is definitive clarity. Whereas the other cities and towns, their rates, as I understand it, are fixed by contract. So I just feel at the mercy of the sanitary district or the water department that, hey, we need some extra money in order to make, in order to pay the city. And I'm wondering, but the city's getting the money from the water sales as a middleman before the water department gets it. So why doesn't the city kind of like chip in and say, hey, we'll absorb some of this? But again, we're brainstorming. And my, you know, I hope my structure and the relationships here are identified properly. But I'm just worried about that, that you guys here will just approve whatever the water department wants you to approve. And quite frankly, I'm leery.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made to adjourn and seconded. Darrell Rokoff.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kalwinski?
Yes.
Torres? Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Raycos?
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Motion's, motion carries, the meeting's adjourned.